Welcome to the September 12th Planning Board Meeting. Montgomery is excused tonight. Christina Martin, much disover is filling in for her. First thing on our agenda are the planning board minutes from last month. We had a full board in attendance. We had a forum of the town board in attendance. We paid some bills as we always do. We passed the SH 29 wetlands lot line adjustment extension. And we had a public hearing for the continuation of the done wetlands application. So anyway, if you guys looked through this, you have any questions or comments? So I'll make a motion to accept the August 13 meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have one bill right now. It's not on my copy of the agenda, but I think that's my mistake. It's for the Times Shelter Round Reporter Advertising, Times Media Group, or the public notice for, and I believe this was for Borough Hall. It's a total $66.07, something we have to do. So I make a motion to accept the Time Review Media Group invoice for $66.07. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have three resolutions to review tonight. The first is number 27 of, that should be 2024. And this is the extension of approval of lot line adjustments for six Daniel Lord Road and three Borough Hall Lane LLC. This is their last one. I've just signed the maps and they should be submitting them and getting a record, certification of recording in the next few days. It does take them out to October 7th, but they won't need it. So I make a motion to accept resolution number 27 of 2024 as corrected with the date for six Daniel Lord Road and three Borough Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next resolution is for the done wetlands application. It would be number 28 of 2024. They are proposing to demolish an existing dwelling patio in the regulated area and accessory building outside of the regulated area. To construct new dwelling and accessory building outside of the regulated area. Construct new pool and patio with second floor deck over patio and pergola partly within the regulated area. All as per site plan by Sherman Engineering Consultant PA dated last revised 7/9/24. And in essence, a summary of the finding of the facts. They are reducing their incursion into the adjacent regulated area and completely removing the incursion into the vegetative buffer. There were some question during the public hearings about the validity of the merger of the two lots that these structures cover. And we've got, the planning board was received an updated email from senior building inspector saying that he deems the lots are merged. So that's why we're proceeding with this. Finding and conclusions, the planning board finds that the proposed application meets the criteria set forth in 129.5 of the town code. Specifically, the board finds that the proposed project will not negatively impact value function or size of the wetlands because applicant is proposing to redevelop the property in a way that eliminates all the improvements from the vegetative buffer and limits the proposed improvements within the adjacent regulated area. More so, the proposed mitigation including but not limited to an upgraded sanitary system, stormwater recharge, both of which will negate impacts on the wetlands. Proposed project will not have a negative impact on the quantity or quality of groundwater because applicants are upgrading an outdated sanitary system located within the 100-foot setback and replacing it with an IA OWTS outside the 100-foot setback. Applicants are also proposing stormwater recharge dry wells. All these improvements will have a positive impact on groundwater. The applicants have demonstrated the proposed project will not create a net increase in the risk of runoff because of the stormwater dry wells and vegetation of the vegetable buffer, which is currently lost. The applicant proposes to redeveloped and already improved lot. The proposed project is the best alternative because the applicant is removing all structures from the vegetative buffer and only requesting a limited amount of accessory structure within the adjacent regulated area. And then the conditions of the approval are the, based on the plan of Sherman Engineering dated 7/9/24. The landscape plan by Ed Hollander dated July 2nd, 2024. Prior to any construction, applicant shall install wireback silk fencing to prevent runoff, silification, and sedimentation during construction until disturbed areas are stabilized. Applicant shall provide and install stormwater collection and recharge dry wells. Said stormwater collection dry wells shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. Proposed, the property shall be revegetated, retated in accordance with the approved landscape plan. The applicant shall install a new low-flow pump, five gallons per minute supply well for water conservation. This permit is only valid for two years. Upon completion of the permitted project, the applicant shall contact the town's environmental consultants. Fees to be incurred by the applicant to confirm that the subject buffer, if any, meets the requirements of the chapter and the conditions of the permit. If confirmed and all other terms are met, the building inspector shall issue a certificate of wetlands compliance. The planning board's determination here and is based upon the building inspector's determination. The subject lots are merged and are one lot. Should it be determined that the lots are not merged, this approval shall become null and void. Anyone on the board have any questions?
The only question I have is on the use of AVB. It seems like everything else in the code, it's adjacent regulated area versus I haven't noticed that in others.
The code actually states adjacent regulated area.
I'm wondering if it matters. I don't think it matters because we
Does it matter that you wrote AVB as in adjacent vegetative buffer as opposed to adjacent regulated area that's in the code?
Yeah, I don't think it matters. It's defined in there too. I think I got it from one of the memos. I don't know if Joe uses that or if the building inspector used it. Somebody used it and I think I just took it from there. So it's fine. It means the same thing.
I think, as long as it doesn't legally have any impact.
I think it's fine. I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay, cool. Thanks. And now I think it's, I have no other questions.
So if no one has any other comments, I make a motion to accept resolution number 28 of 2024 for the done residence at 18 and 20 Tuttle Drive. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have another lot line adjustment extension. This is for SH 29 Westneck LLC, resolution number 29 of 2024. They've been, I think they're really close to having the maps. I think the health department has signed them. They're just going to get them in front of me. And similar to the previous extension, they should be done. This should be the last one. This gives them a buffer until October 23rd. Any questions? Let's go ahead and make a motion to accept resolution number 29 of 2024 for SH 29 Westneck LLC and the Robert Lip site and Lois B Morris lot line adjustment. All in favor? Do I have a second? All in favor? Last one is number 30 of 2024 is for the Westneck Creek Cottage subdivision. We passed the secret resolution, parts, the resolution and parts two and three of the short environmental assessment form two months ago. They had subsequently come back with a revised plan, which we were okay with. So this resolution and the revised parts two and three of the EAF are just updating it for that current map. Do you have any, anyone have any questions about this or the parts two and three of the EAF? I checked it all seemed fine to me. Okay, so I make a motion to accept number, resolution number 30 of 2024 for Westneck Creek Cottage subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two public hearings tonight. The first for the Tesoro Wetlands application at One Seagull Road. We'll read the notice. Notice hereby given, just make sure I got the right one. Notice hereby given that the following hearings will be held by the Shelter Round Planning Board on the 10th day of September 2024 in person at the Shelter Round Town Hall, 38 North Perry Road, Shelter Round, New York. Applications are scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. A public hearing regarding an application for a wetlands permit by Tesoro Trust. The property which is, the subject of the application is located at One Seagull Road, Shelter Round, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 723-259. The applicant is requesting a wetlands permit as required pursuant to Town Wetlands Code 129-2 for the following. One, removal of the existing conventional sanitary system and replacing with a IA system within the vegetative buffer. Number two, construction of a five-foot by 14-foot cantilevered second floor balcony within the vegetative buffer. Number three, removal of an existing 16.3-foot by 8.3-foot shed that is located within the 25-foot adjacent regulated area. Number four, construct, construction of an 18-by-38.5-foot swimming pool within the adjacent regulated area, including two swimming pool dry wells. Five, installation of a 1,000-gallon water tank topping off the pool located in the 75-foot vegetative buffer. Six, installation of two dry wells to handle stormwater runoff from the roof within the adjacent regulated area. And seven, install pool equipment and relocate AC units next to the house within the adjacent regulated area. Secret class type two, subject of applications available for you in the office of Shelter Round Planning Board and the planning board's website at such and such. Okay. Matt Sherman, I believe you're here with the applicant.
Good evening. I'm Matt Sherman with Sherman Consulting. I'm here on behalf of the property owner of Tesoro Trust.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I, I'm going to interrupt you one sec.
Yes.
We do have a memo on this from the CAC. Wetlands, they have 10 points. Wetland delineation is four years old in 2020 and should be updated. Construction of pool balcony septic system, et cetera, do not comply with codes 133 and 129. They break that on a lot of their applications and it is the reason for, the major reason for their denial. Above ground pool should be considered for this site. Entire site is in FEMA flood zone. Identify double, double circle symbols by north expansion of, and leaching pools. Three site plans by Michael Hammer all have different dates and information. Three C1 drawings, all titled proposed site plan. Submit vegetation plan. Verify that the swimming pool was indicated on plan sent to D E C. Denial of wetlands application vote 40. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Again, Matt Sherman with Sherman Consulting and Engineering over here on behalf of the property owner. If I could share my screen, I've got a quick presentation and a layout of the project for you and for everybody in the audience and on Zoom. This property, it's about three-quarter of an acre on Seagull Road and between Seagull Road and Mabel's Creek down by the south end of the island. There was an existing four-bedroom dwelling, two-story four-bedroom dwelling on site. Right here, it's in about the middle of the property. The wetlands boundary, the flagged vegetative wetlands boundary of Mabel's Creek runs along that right-hand side there. And then obviously Seagull Road runs along the left-hand side. There's developed residential properties to the south, to the west, and then a little bit further up to the north. There is a flood zone on this property. It's an AE7, I believe it is, that runs, I'm getting the cursor working again, that runs basically just along the wetlands line. So right along here is that AE7. Everything interior to the property is in an X zone. And an X zone, just for people who aren't familiar with FEMA regulations, in this specific area, it has a 0.2% chance of flooding. So 500-year storm, you have a chance of having flooding on this property. So it's not in a FEMA hazard zone. For comparative sake, the property we're standing in right now is also in a FEMA X zone. So FEMA X zone is outside of the flood hazard zones. The project, as we're talking about here is, I'll also show you on this one. We've got our septic system, which is right here. And again, remember the wetlands boundary is right there. So our septic is, you know, 20 feet or so off of the, not even 15 feet or so off of the wetlands boundary. So this is what we're proposing and I'll zoom in on this to make it a little bit easier to see. We've got, this is the existing septic tank right here. And there, right now, there's two existing leaching pools. Depth to groundwater right here is very, very shallow. You can see the elevation is at about a six-foot elevation here, about 6.5 up here. So there's really no depth. There's very little depth to groundwater. It's very difficult to get a decent septic system and appropriately sized septic system in this site. So the existing system, we didn't dig it up to see what was there because we didn't want to disturb the ground in the area that close to the wetlands until we're actually doing the project. But it's either significantly undersized or it's, the leaching pools are in groundwater. It's one or the other. You can't have, you can't fit a compliant septic system in this location because there's only two leaching pools. So what we're proposing to do is remove the existing septic tank and those two leaching pools and replace it with a new nitrogen-reducing septic tank, IA treatment unit, and six leaching pools. So we're making the pools, or significantly more pools, at a significantly shallower depth so that we can fit the code-compliant septic system into this location. The proposed septic is running along the same line as the existing at just over 11 feet from the wetlands boundary. This project bounced back and forth a lot between the health department and the D E C and the town before we got to the wetlands permit process because of this fact where we are right on top of the wetlands. We had looked at all sorts of different things. What other options could we do? Could we put the septic over here in the area where they were proposing the swimming pool? That was the primary thing, the first thing we looked at. The problem with that is the neighbor's well is right here. So we can't bring the septic down to that property. We really can't move the septic anywhere from where it is right now. That's the only place the health department would allow us to replace the septic at was in that current location. So the other thing we're proposing to do is the swimming pool. It's a 14-by-34 interior dimension and it was about a one-foot coping. So like 16-by-36 approximate size for the, for the swimming pool. It is just over 76, 76.9 feet from the wetlands boundary. And it also complies with side yard setbacks of 20 feet and a front yard setback in this area is 40 feet. And we're just over that at 41.7 feet. We've got stormwater dry wells for the roof. So there's two of them. It was mentioned in the memo that Ian read. Stormwater dry wells up here for the roof on the water side, or the roadside of the house. We also have two dry wells for the swimming pool located between the swimming pool and that southerly property line. And the 1,000-gallon water tank that we'll be using for topping off the swimming pool is here between the driveway and the road. The test hole that we installed on site in order to see how far we had to groundwater is right here on that northern portion of the property. One of the things that was brought up at the CAC that didn't end up in their memo was they were asking about the test hole. And if that was an accurate determination of what the depth of water is on this site. And for a site of this size, your depth of water is going to be the same in this short of a distance. It doesn't change that much, especially when you're rolling, when you're moving parallel to the shoreline. If you're moving 200 feet, 300 feet landward, then you would justify having another test hole to be a little bit more precise as far as the depth of groundwater. But in a situation like this where we're relatively parallel to surface waters on that same site, that test hole is a good indication as to what that groundwater elevation is. They had also asked about the LP tank, the in-ground propane tank. That's right up here on the very northernly part of the property. And the, I don't know if it's on this drawing or not, but on the survey that the original site plan that we submitted to the town, there was a couple of rings right in this area here. I've got a photo of it. It's just a dry stacked stone or paper, like a fire pit, backyard fire pit. The survey, I didn't even bother putting it on the survey because it wasn't substantial enough. I had included it on my initial site plan just because it was there. But that's, that was the other thing that the CAC had commented on.
That was number five on their memo? Was that the double circle?
Yes, that was number five, exactly. Yeah. And you'll see, I've got a photograph of it. So you'll see what it is we're talking about. Well, one of the things the CAC had mentioned too was saying that the whole site was in a flood zone. Again, not to belabor the point, but the blue hatched area, that's the area of the property that's within the flood zone. The rest of the area is in that X zone outside of the hazard area. It's really a better way to term it. There's the cantilevered porch, which is a second floor cantilevered porch. It's shown right here on this drawing. That's the waterside elevation. And you can see on the south elevation from the side, it's a cantilevered porch, meaning that there's nothing coming down to the ground. It's going to be extended. It's going to be fastened back into the building. So that's where the support's going to be. So you're not going to have any ground disturbance or anything like that associated with the, with this cantilevered porch or balcony, I should say. One of the things that the planning board had asked about on their initial review of this application was what was happening with the grade for the sanitary system. Up by the house, you're at about a nine-foot elevation. It drops off a little bit quicker as you're coming away from the house and then it kind of levels out a little bit as you're coming out toward the water. This line here is the wetlands boundary. This line here is the existing building foundation. So let's zoom in on this one too, make it a little bit easier to see. That thick green line is the proposed grade. That black line below it is the existing grade. So at the IA unit, it's going to remain relatively the same. It's, like I said, it's got a smoke to it. So we're going to flatten that out a little bit just because of the coverage for the IA unit. And for the leaching pool, we're going to be bringing the grade in that area up anywhere around six inches, eight inches, something to that effect. So there will be some change in grade there, but it's not appreciable at all.
Each line represents a 12 inches?
Yes, yep. Those are one-foot contour, or one-foot elevations. Groundwater elevation is approximately 1.2 feet. The So when you're looking at it from, with this slice, looking at it from the side, we've got our minimum elevation difference of three feet from the bottom, or from groundwater to the bottom of the leaching pool. That's a health department requirement. And these are two-foot deep leaching pools. The swimming pool, again to the CAC's memo suggesting that the swimming pool be out of the ground. It is partially out of the ground, not completely. What we did was we designed it to comply with the town code, which is a two-foot minimum separation distance from the highest expected groundwater to the bottom of the pool. I actually boosted a little bit more to 1.6 feet, highest groundwater, just to give us a little bit of cushion there. So we're two feet to the bottom of the pool. It's a six-foot deep pool on the deep end, which brings us to an elevation of about 11 foot, two inches elevation at the ground. At the swimming pool is at about nine feet. So the pool is going to be up out of the ground by just over two feet. This just shows the coverage, you're kind of a simplified site plan with your 75-foot setback here, coming along there, and then 100-foot setback coming along just to the left of that 75-foot setback. When we look at this site, the existing coverage within the vegetative buffer, it's, right now, we're at 2193 square feet. Our proposed additional coverage is, we're going to add about 1.5% of coverage, bringing us to 2,222 square feet. So 2193 to 2222. There is a Bilco door that's on the ground level below where this balcony is. So I didn't double count that area that's over top of the Bilco door. But the balcony itself is 54 square feet. And then you've got the Bilco below it, which is 36, I think 34, I think they had today. 36, yeah. With 25 of that is underneath the proposed balcony. All right, so here's a couple of photos to kind of give you a feel for the, a feel for the site. This is standing in the area where the proposed swimming pool would be going. You can see that right there is that little fire pit and a couple Adirondack chairs around it into that sandy area that's just on the inboard side of the wetlands boundary. That's it, looking from another view from the same side. This is a shed in the area where the swimming pool would be going. So that shed would be coming out. The swimming pool would be going in. If you can see the whole area, the ground covered in all this area is turf grass. We would be proposing to replace it with turf grass again, either Zoysia or a rye mix or something along those lines, whatever the board would like to see. Here's the propane tank. You can see on the right-hand side here, that's the wetlands boundary on the right-hand side. And on the left-hand side, that's some plantings that are along the edge of the road. So this distance from these plantings, right at the edge of the road, to these plantings right at the wetlands boundary, that's the area that we've got to work with to put the propane tank, or keep the propane tank. This is the side of the building where that balcony is going to be. So these two windows would turn So these two windows would turn into French doors. Your balcony would be right above them from side to right below, excuse me, from side to side. And it would be right above this Bilco door, which is that grade. That's all I have as far as the presentation. If the board has any specific questions for me, I'd be more than happy to, more than happy to answer.
What's the overall increase in the vegetative buffer?
The overall coverage increase within vegetative buffer? We are at 27 square feet, 1.5%. So we're going from 2193 to 2222.
So you're adding 27 square feet?
Yeah. Yeah. Again, there's 25 square feet of Bilco door that's not underneath the, or there's...
That's not...
Yeah, so it's 56 square feet, I think it was, right? 56 square feet of balcony over top of the Bilco door. So in fairness, to be as conservative as possible, let's say 56 square feet is the total new construction within the vegetative buffer, even though there's, it's not bird's eye view, all new, new cover.
This house has seen numerous, a few renovations over time. When was the last previous one? Were they all prior to 2001?
I don't know. I don't know what the, how all the previous renovations were. The major one was in like 97, when they put the second floor on.
So with the stock up. Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, we're, we've been really tight to the 100 square feet on many applications. We're going to have to bend the rule, our rules a little bit with the extreme circumstances of the sanitary system to accept that. So I'm a little bit concerned. Was there a prior renovation that added to the vegetative buffer coverage done after the wetlands draw was put into place? So that's the one question I would have just because.
Did the building department have that record or?
I don't know. That would, that would take some time to review and I was just hoping you had that.
Yeah, no, I'm not aware of any.
What does the property card, are you near the town?
It affected your bill was 2012, so that doesn't necessarily mean that just, that could just be when they filed with the CEO.
Sometimes it gives you a little bit of information on the property card. If you're on the town G I S or...
Matt, I have a question, like it's kind of related to, let's see, this, CAC is like third point. I mean, let's just say they didn't do the pool at all. You still can't move the septic.
No.
You couldn't even put it up in that area if you just wanted like to grab the pool entirely.
We only placed, we can put the septic as where it's at. Yeah. We went around it with the health department, trying to even adjust where it was in that area, getting it closer to our own well and getting it, any movement would get it closer to nearby supply wells and the health department just would not allow that.
You can't just leave it because it's an old system.
No, you can't. And that's, yeah.
All right, and I was also going to ask you.
No, it doesn't say, yeah. It said 71 and then 2012 effective year.
So on their number eight, you know, they're asking for the vegetative plan. I guess you didn't, well, I didn't see, you didn't turn that in, but you're saying just like turf grass is the way you're thinking.
In this case, the vegetation plan is the existing vegetation. Not every project, we're not proposing new vegetation on every project. We like to re-vegetate in areas that are disturbed with Zoysia grass. If the board would like to see a 10 foot non-turf buffer along the wetlands boundary, by all means, I'm sure they'd be, they'd be open to any of that kind of thing. They'd like to keep it as is and that's, so that's what we've proposed.
And their point number nine, what's your response to that?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what they're seeing on that because the DEC plan that they...
Submitted something that showed the plan.
The DEC, we submitted two separate, they split the application into two because the septic system isn't a requirement for the swimming pool. The septic system kind of stands on its own merits. So they approved that as a separate approval. The same site plan was approved of the septic system and the swimming pool for both the septic system approval and the swimming pool approval. So we, I didn't realize, I had forgotten that they had split it and that we had done the septic one first and then came back into the swimming pool one. So I submitted the, the septic one and then it was pointed out at the CAC that we had not, that the DEC, the narrative of the DEC plan didn't say the swimming pool. So I went back and looked and I forgot that we had that already. So I submitted it to the board and to the town shortly after the CAC meeting. The, where they said that the verified swimming pool was indicated on plan sent to DEC, you got this DEC stamped plan that has the swimming pool on it. So I'm not quite sure what they were looking at.
It does say there was a 23 patio, Fox and porch coverage improvements, but that's the only other thing that's in the G I S.
All right, Matt, I don't have any question, anyone have any questions from that?
No, the propane tank is going to stay, right?
Yeah.
And that's from, you tell us more.
It's one of those sites where it's, it's just an exceedingly tight site. You know, I'd love to be able to stretch it out a little bit, get the propane tank away from the wells more, get the septic away from the wetlands more. There's just nowhere to go. And doing the project, I thought, I was kind of surprised that it received the response that it did. I think even just doing the septic system in and of itself is mitigation for everything else. That's, I was a little surprised at that response.
Does anyone in the audience have any comments? Please step up the announce here, mention your name.
Hi, I'm Barry Silver and I live in Freezingal Road. I have lots of questions. Do I have access to any of these pictures or?
They're all, they're all on the town website.
Okay. I guess this is my first appearance here. So I, my house is for sale and I feel very strongly I need to protect the sale and, and if I don't sell it, anything that affects my site. My well is almost right on the property line. My septic system is almost right on the property line. And I'm not sure what else is on the property line, but I, I need to do some research and I need time to do that. And I need time to talk to people who know about this kind of thing because I don't. So can you help me look at some future plan that I could implement or give me some advice?
As a planning board, we're not ones who usually give advice.
No, not advice, how to proceed. If I want to look at something and I have an issue.
Yeah. You were notified, you were notified in the mail, right?
Only that there was a hearing.
And I read the notice and it said plans are available at the building department.
I didn't see that.
Yeah. So to be fair, all around, you've had at least 30 days of notice that the drawings are online and...
Okay, I did not see that notice. I don't always get my mail. I didn't see it and so I don't want to be penalized because my mail delivery is not what it should be. The only way I knew about this is because I live right next door. There's a big sign in front of their house and that's what I read and that's why I'm here.
Can I ask, I mean, where to go on the web, she should go to the...
Well, yeah, no, or you can go into town hall and see it. I'm just, I'm just...
Now that I know it's successful, I'm going to have a look at it. But having looked at it and having issues, do I come back here or do I talk to?
So in order for you, so this is a public hearing. We're trying to get all the information thrown con. Once I, once we close the public hearing, we can't take on any more comments. So the, the thought is that we would have to leave it open and then resume the public or for comments for a short period, say a couple of weeks, or we'd have to keep it fully open and then allow you to come back and present whatever findings you have next month. What do you guys find is fair in this situation for all around?
I don't see how anything that's currently proposed affects her property directly that I can see.
I, they're not staying away from the well.
Yeah.
It doesn't affect their sanitary system.
Yeah. And so I think if nothing else, it's an improvement would probably actually be good for it and it's better to have more improved properties around you than less for it generally from a...
Barry, you were concerned about the side, like the setback on the side and as Matt Sherman just, you know, just gave in his presentation, he's within the boundary. So any work that he's doing is not really, it's not going to touch your well. It's not going to do anything to your border of your property.
I know it's not going to touch my well, but I don't know enough about this kind of thing to know what it means that it's going to be close to my well. Does it affect my well?
Well, it's actually going to make your water better because they're putting in an IA system, which cleans your, like that water from the septic is going to go into your water that you're drinking. So basically it's an improvement in the lot next to you. He's taking out an old system and he's putting in a brand new technology, which cleans the water.
That is, and that is one thing. They're also catching stormwater, water and putting it into dry wells that keeps it from running across the lawn. These are improvements to the water table, improvements quality and, and to, you know, the neighbors. So I'm...
So they're doing me a favor, which is very nice.
Pretty much, yeah.
Everything they're doing seems to be within a normal construction project within their rights.
Okay.
So I'm the only, I'm thoughtful of your, your situation. I'm also thoughtful of theirs and not wanting to delay them further. I know they've been working on this for quite some time.
Okay. And so in terms of the vegetation, does that need approval from, from this body or they can just do whatever they want on that side of the bend?
We're going to discuss some of their, maybe a buffer or something, but that again is really to protect the wetlands. It's not about protecting the neighbor. We could ask for some screening. I don't know.
Screening from the...
I'm not into this for screening. I like the sound of children in the swimming pool. I'm not objecting to this. I'm just trying to protect out of ignorance because, and I apologize for that, but I have no background or any...
I would say the things that they're, that they're offering to, that they're going to be doing could actually possibly improve your, where you are. It's actually better.
Quite much delay by the time they finish, but okay.
Yeah, I don't think anything they're doing is, would necessarily, should not affect the selling or non-selling of your property. Shouldn't affect that.
Oh, I don't think so either. I'm just worried, I don't understand enough about the mechanics of a home. And I just want to protect mine.
No, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience have a comment on this application? Does anyone in Zoom have a comment on this application? Hi Pam.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My only concern is that the swimming pool is going to be two feet above grade. So it seems to me that there are going to have to be some steps also added to that coping somewhere so that people can get in and out of the pool safely. It's just one extra detail that seems to be missing if that's the case with the pool. And then I don't know how that affects any other, like you said, chairman, about the other construction that might've happened on this house after 2001. I think that's worth investigating before you close the hearing.
Understood, understood. I can't answer about the pool.
That's a building department issue.
That's a building department issue.
But being two feet above the groundwater is within regulations.
Being two feet above the groundwater is in regulation. So the egress from the pool has, is a homeowner and building department issue.
But wouldn't it have to be on the plans showing that they, they're going to add some steps to get up into this pool?
Well, we can ask the, Matt, but the far end of the pool is actually in an area that they don't need a wetlands permit for. It's in the outside of the setback. So if they want to put a stair there, they can certainly put it. It's again, a building department issue. They're not going to be able to put something in the adjacent regulated area or in the vegetative buffer unless they come back to us. So they're not going to do that, but there is ample space for them to put it in a, in a compliant area if they so choose to.
Yeah, okay. I was just looking to see it on the plans to make sure that that was the plan. Thanks a lot.
Anyone else on Zoom have any questions? So if that's the case, I make a motion to close the wetlands application for One Seagull Road, the Tesoro residence. Do I have a second? All in favor? Hey, we have another public hearing. I'm going to read, voice is getting worse. Notice hereby given that the following hearing will be held by the Shelter Island Planning Board on the 10th day of September, 2024, in person at the Shelter Island Town Hall, 38 North Ferry Road, Shelter Island, New York. Applications are scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. A public hearing regarding the application of Three Borough Hall Lane LLC and Five Borough Hall Lane LLC for a lot line modification of lands reportedly owned by them, located in the A Residential District and near Shore Peninsula Overlake, with frontage along West Neck Creek. Which parcels are identified on the Suffolk County Tax Map number as 714 to 60.13 and 718 to 19.02? Oh, those are both for Three Borough Hall and then additional number 714 to 60.9 for Five Borough Hall. The application proposes to transfer 25,253.51 square feet of land from Three Borough Hall Lane to Five Borough Hall Lane. As a result, the lot area of Three Borough Hall will decrease from approximately 162,720.19 square feet to 137,466.68 square feet. That's lot one. And the lot area for Five Borough Hall will increase from approximately 44,936.91 square feet to 70,190.42 square feet. And that's considered lot two. Secret class type two. Subject applications are available for review at the office of the Shelter Island Planning Board and on the planning board's website. John Wagner, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sean Wacker. I'm currently with Stolman, Ballin, Hazler and Hyman, L H P, offices at Blumberg Water Park, Way Hop Hop, New York, representing the applicants. Much to say about this application, nothing in what was in the public works. We're just moving approximately, let's see here, from lot one is known as Three Borough Hall Lane, that's the street address. And we're moving 45 acres basically, just over a half an acre from that lot to the adjoining Five Borough Hall. So the final tallies of the two lots, lot one, after, after the adjustment will be 3.16 acres and lot two, after the adjustment will be 1.61 acres. Lot two is growing in size. That's, that's Five Borough Hall Lane. And there are some existing improvements on Five Borough Hall Lane, which ought to be removed. Three Borough Hall Lane is currently vacant. It's nothing on your structural wise on that property. And it's about it. If you have any questions.
Planning board members have questions? Pretty straightforward?
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward.
Joe wants something from his memo.
I think the only things on Joe's memo, but we can go through, discuss it later, had to do with... to do with mapping issues that can be done at a later date.
There was one thing on the engineers memo, which I think I mentioned the last time I was here, which has to do with the 50-foot scenic easement that was established on what we now know as Five Borough Hall Lane as part of the original subdivision, Five Borough Hall Lane subdivision. And as part of the application, we submitted a copy of the scenic easement, recorded scenic easement. And it's evident from the face of it that the purpose of that scenic easement was essentially to forgive its development within 50 feet of the water and also to limit any future dockage along that, along that frontage to the existing dock. And it was also intended that that dock would not be a community dock for the entire subdivision. It's just to be used for that particular parcel. I don't think any of that is germane to what we're doing today. As a matter of fact, your restrictions today in the Near Shore Peninsula Overlake script are even more restrictive than that scenic easement. 75 feet now, structures and 100 feet for septic. So I mean, it's, it's an artifact of history, that 50-foot scenic easement, but it really doesn't serve any utility now. So I could say.
Good point.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions about this application? Does anyone on Zoom have any questions about this application? Since that's the case, I make a motion to close lot line adjustment for Three and Five Borough Hall Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. There it is. Okay, so that's the end of our business meeting and on to the work session. Current lot line modifications, subdivision applications, the, the Bloom Minor Subdivision. They have their sanitary system in. I think they're waiting on connecting to the Westneck Water District as to condition of meeting some of the Health Department standards before they can go further. So they currently have until January 14th, 2025, and I may reach out to the application, applicants to get an update for next month. SH29 Westneck LLC Lot Line Adjustment, we've just extended them to October 23rd. But we should have the final plat in hand shortly. Sixth Daniel Lord Road LLC and Three Borough Hall Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment, we just extended them to the October 7th, but I presume we're going to get the final recorded plat much sooner than that. The Elliott Bowesman Lot Line Adjustment has until November 12th, 2024. I think you're just looking to get a Health Department signature on that plat.
Yes.
And you should, you should be able to get that done pretty quickly.
I'm calling him twice a day.
Okay. R and B of Shelter Island LLC, Radigan Lot Line Adjustment, waiting on proof of deed filing. They have until December 10th, 2024. Beth, have you received any correspondence from them? Any draft deeds that, yet? Or are we still waiting on even that?
No, I don't believe, I don't believe I've received anything. Nothing recently, at least.
Matt's verifying here, no, we haven't received.
Okay, good. I didn't remember it, but I didn't, you know.
Thank you. Westneck Cottage, Creek Cottage LLC Subdivision. But we just updated the SECA and EAS. I think it's a matter of setting the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys all ready to go with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll set that for next month. And Beth, we can have a, a public notice for that. Appreciate it.
Problem.
Three and Five Borough Hall Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment. We just finished the public hearing. I think we all felt, felt it's very straightforward. The applicant's correct, applicant's representative that the wetlands restrictions are much stricter now, so that 50-foot easement doesn't really make sense. It still exists on part of the lot. It's not being removed. And the little triangle of where it could be extended doesn't really make sense unless you guys feel it should be extended over just.
They just brought it up.
I think it seems reasonable. There's nothing, it's, it's not a, okay.
So Beth, I'm going to ask you to write a, a resolution for that, for our review for next month. If that's okay.
Yep.
Eiffel and Shearer Lot Line Adjustment, we're waiting on a revised map, I believe, on that. Did we get that? Is that in the stack?
Yeah.
I didn't see it. I don't remember seeing it come over by email.
Yeah, I don't think I.
Two new applications.
Yeah, I haven't seen this one.
I don't see it.
I didn't check if I have more in my envelope. I think so. I picked it all up. We haven't seen it. Call yourself twice a day.
Okay, so I guess we'll talk about that one next month.
Next month, yeah.
The white performance bonds, this one's an interesting one. We haven't talked about this recently.
It just keeps giving.
The town board did pass a resolution that would rescind the performance bond once a maintenance bond is put in place. Per town code, the maintenance bond for the first year or continuing thereafter is in a value of half the performance bond. So the town will release them from the performance bond as long as they maintain the maintenance bond. And that's for the first year. If the whites were to dedicate the property, and we're just talking about the preliminary piece of driveway now, if they were to dedicate that to the town, then they would not have to, in future years, maintain that maintenance bond. So at least we've dealt with half it, half of it. The second part of it, and I've gone back and forth with town attorney and Beth, is we've, in the past, the town board has up their, done it by resolution to increase the performance bond. Stephen Kylie came back to me and said, per 11125 expiration and term of performance bond, Part B, the performance bond shall have a term of two years. The term of a performance bond may be extended by the planning board. When such, and that's extended by the planning board. When such an extension is granted, it may be required that the performance bond estimate be increased to take into consideration changes in constructing costs in order to carry out the required capital improvements. So Stephen is just punting it back to us to make that determination where it's always been done by the town board in the past. Beth is advising us that it really should be done by the town board and not by us. And I feel a little stuck in the middle.
There's no requirement to increase. It's just, it says it maybe.
I think the board can, if the board reviews it and, and it determines that it should be increased, I think that it can recommend to the town board that it be increased, but I don't think the planning board itself has the authority.
So we did that, Beth.
Accept any performance bond.
We had Joe review and he put together a performance bond estimate. We, as a board, wrote a letter, a memo to the town board requesting that they increase the performance bond. And that's as far as we got. So we're kind of stuck in the middle here.
Right.
You said you wrote to Stephen Kylie as he, he did not get back to you?
I haven't heard back from him yet, so I'll follow up with him and see if we can figure this out amongst ourselves.
Okay, I appreciate that because I really want to go after, not after him, so to speak, but I want to make sure that both the maintenance bond and the performance bond are active. And right now neither one are, in my opinion. Thank you, Beth.
No problem.
Okay, so now to other business. Planning Board Budget, you saw the memo, you saw the information from the past two years that Shelby sent to us. I took a stab at some numbers. For the supervisor, she wants the maintain salary increases to 3%. So going down the line, I've shown them as 3%, just as a straightforward presentation. We've not used our budget on equipment, so I don't think we increase the equipment budget.
Your phone's very bad.
A hundred dollars isn't going too far.
Really bad, though. Sorry.
Office and miscellaneous, we're, we've been under budget for that for many years at $600, so I think we just keep it at its current level. Training, we're under, we're under what? We're under even the modified budget. So I don't think we need to up the training. And that's yours, that's just sending people to Association of Towns and for paying for our membership to the Planning Federation. Renting and advertising now.
That's correct, I would think.
Adopted budget is 200. Modified budget, modified being what? How, how do you explain those two? Do you guys, can you tell me the difference?
Yeah, so the supervisor first poses the budget, so that's empty. Then it's modified based on town board's recommendations. They can scale it down or up it a little bit, and then it's adopted. So that's the final number.
Okay, so it was adopted at 200. It was originally at 700. And over the past couple of years, we've been spending a lot of money on advertising. In 2024, if I'm reading this correctly, we've spent 404 in 2023. We, uh, spent 14, $1,500 as opposed to 200. So I think that number is too low.
The advertising, uh, now the wetlands are going back to town board, does that cost, go back with me? Because we've, we've been covering those.
Discussion of site plan coming to us.
But it's not here yet, right? But.
But it could be, so.
It could be within.
It could end up being the same.
Yeah, it does seem like we need certainly more.
I just think that.
We're spending more than.
So I'm proposing 300. Where currently adopted was 200, the modified budget was 700, the town board reduced 200, and I'm suggesting 300.
That is reasonable.
A minor amount.
We can take our equipment budget.
Now, professional services, even though we're not doing as much wetlands now, we are going to be doing more at the site plan level. So I was suggesting upping that 3%.
So right now it's at 40?
Right now it's at 30.
Oh, no, 30.
And we've already spent through six months this year, 22,682, but it's going to be changing as we do less wetlands and then more site plan.
But do you think that we generally would have been doing more wetlands than site plan? These two categories are quite different.
They're different, but we're also doing a lot more lot line adjustments. We.
Yeah.
And.
Those used to be very infrequent.
Yeah, and subdivisions were infrequent. Now we're just doing lot line adjustments, which takes some work. So I'm, I think just following that 3% rule for now and seeing what the town board does to us. And then, you know, as, as the modified budget and adopted budget for actual intake fees, the town board had 6,000. We've been way above that with, oh, it's a separate note, where in 2023, it was 7,740 and in 2024, it was 18,820. So I think some recognition that the fees have gone up. So instead of 6,000, writing 8,000, proposing it that way and then letting the town board do what they want to, but at least we've done our end. Okay. Wetlands code update, last I heard is the town board is kind of on hold. They're looking to hire an environmental consultant, professional to make some suggestions, comments about our wetland code. So currently that's on hold.
So you're not doing a public discussion on that?
Um, we're going to have our new guy first give us recommendations before we put it on public hearing.
So you're going to consult with this new person first? Okay.
I hope we've already worked on it.
And, and will the report that we submitted be shown to that person?
And ideas and. He's brought that to this committee, so we'll put all of that together and package.
I would love to see that online, too. See our work on, posted as, as the CAC members for, you know, in our reviews for wetlands will be posted for the application. Be great to have that posted as part of this process. That moves on to site plan review, the update, and I've got your very thoughtful notes. I don't know if anyone else has put a lot of time thought into this. Julie, do you want to?
I think I copied it.
You did.
No, you did. So the one item was the fire protection. You wanted something more specific in regards to this Section D.
Right, so actually in the email, Chen, you had mentioned somebody else on it as a town board member or somebody else. Was it a friend guy? One of the council people that recommended something?
So, yeah, so the earliest.
I was looking at that to see what.
From my first meeting with Amber and Ben, Ben did have some, some points. And the one question was about shared costs if a neighboring property were to be included by the planning board in the site plan review. And we did talk briefly about that before. Beth gave us, uh, discussed why, why it would be needed and how the fees would be shared.
Right, yeah, I just found it here. So what I wrote was that, basically I said if I interpret this in a situation would be facing us, only if determined that no other solution, keeping everything solely happening on the applicant's property could be found. And then I said I would assume that the expense would only be on the applicant's shoulders after they are, after all, they are the ones bringing about the situation. But something came to mind hypothetically, suppose we had a situ, suppose we had a situation like on Manantic Road where, you know, one owner allows overflow parking to another lot because they just have a mutually beneficial, you know, lot, they're close to each other in a lot. It could be something where basically the adjacent owner realized that sharing a parking lot could help them and they don't mind going into this remedy together. However, I would still think that it would be the original, it would be on, it would still be the responsibility of the original applicant to pay for everything.
Well, I, I think, I think that there's two different things going on here. First of all, the, the one case that you're talking about is, I think the site plan reviews for the specific lot, if they want to get into a temporary, I use that word temporary, engagement with a neighbor to rent the neighbor's parking out of business hours, because they have a different business hours, they can, but that's not part of the actual site plan review.
No, no, I, I was actually thinking like there's, there's some issue with the lot that they have the application for the site plan. And maybe it just works out that there is some kind of remedy where it could affect the neighbor, but in a beneficial way. They could go in on it, but I don't think that you'd expect that lot, the neighboring lot to also pay the expense of the. They could go in on it, but I don't think that you'd expect that lot, the neighboring lots will also pay the expense of the application.
I think that's between the two parties.
Yeah, they can handle that outside of the site plan review.
Yeah. Beth, I was trying to rack my brain about the example you gave, and I don't know if you can remember from two months ago potentially. Why would one, so applicant from, for a site plan review, why would their neighbor have to be brought into it on occasion? And this is something that Kevin and Tony put into the, to the code when they were drafting it, based on South Hope.
I think there was a, sometimes it comes up in situations where maybe if you have some, a business that is going, you're, you're dealing with access, and maybe it makes more sense to have a cross-access setup between neighbors and, you know, only having one, you know, two entrances and exits and things, and working out, you know, less curb cuts or things like that and, and, or whatever. I think that was a situation where sometimes it makes more sense to do it that way if the neighboring property is willing to comply and, and be a part of it, then I think it's, it's better planning, overall planning.
Ultimately, from what you're describing, it sounds like it's only if the neighboring property agrees to join the
Right.
the application. Okay. Okay.
There's definitely, kind of related to your, you mentioned the firefighting side, there, there's definitely recommendations from the NFPA that others around, turnout, help spacing, all that should be potentially under consideration.
And that would be under normal review anyway. I don't think it needs additional line added. But we can, we can recommend that your, your, your one line of
Just a simple category like emergency service.
Service.
Is, is, is that a consideration or?
I just think it should have its own line there, just.
I think you're right, for both EMS and for fire.
Other than that, that was the only thing.
Well, I thought the other point you brought up and, and the reacting to Ben's comment, which was where in regard to eligibility for administrative site plan review, it states whether a property lock coverage is increased or decreased by ten percent or five hundred feet. And Ben was like, well, why decrease? And I think your response that, well, demolition.
Is still disturbance.
Yeah. Is a disturbance and may reconfigure the property to a certain area, may move parking sufficiently away from the house, from the, the building, the facility, that the handicap parking in the house is too far away. So it should be part of the review.
Yeah.
Any, any delta you want.
That's.
You're spot on. I think we learned that in wetlands, like you disturb, you disturb.
That's what it is, yeah.
That's good.
So my reaction to the code is, it's something that I was comfortable with in twenty nineteen. I'm happy for it to be adopted as it is right now. My only stipulation is that it doesn't get yanked away from the planning board again. The next time a local developer gets upset about it.
I don't think we're going to be able to.
They complain. So I, that's my only reservation, because this giving us stuff, taking it away, giving us back is just, just crazy. Marcus, do you have any other thoughts or?
Well, you know my feelings about.
I know you're against it completely.
I mean, it's, you know, it doesn't do anything to get to the goal of, you know, cleaning up this guy's junk or that person's junk. I mean, they don't do nothing about it, you know? I think there's different ways of doing that.
Did you have any thoughts?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, your points are spot on, so.
All right, so let me summarize the, this for the town board and get it, and I know Amber's anxious to get it over to us as you guys are getting hit with.
That would be wonderful.
Tons of these.
Really, it's because of some money or actually give them a half a week.
I think, I think with everything given to us, we get a five percent raise, everything given to us, we're going to have a five percent raise.
I'll get ten.
For crying.
One thing that has popped up recently that I think is worth a brief discussion is in lot line adjustments, we started as a policy about three or four years ago to require health department approval before we sign the final plats. We ran to a couple of projects where that caused trouble by them. We're giving them the, the sign off, and then they, the homeowner's stuck trying to have to go back to the health department and get that done. Right now, we get a copy of those plans, the health department approval. But it's good advice from Joe that we should have them on the, the plat that I sign and gets recorded in the miscellaneous map section at the county clerk's office. But it's not a requirement in the code. And we haven't really discussed it as a board of making it a policy that, that we need the health department's signatures on, on the map. So I don't know what you guys thought, or is the current process where we have the applicant's health department map and our map that doesn't have the health department information on it? Is that okay to have two different maps? Or should everything be on the one before it gets filed with the, as a miscellaneous map at the county? We've been doing the two map approach, or now it's a two map approach, used to be just ours for a very long time. And now the question is, do we consolidate that? And then the follow-up question would be, do we have to codify that?
I was going to say, is that?
Is there any benefit of keeping it as is? What, what is the benefit?
Why can't the applicants be a lot happier than having to go back to the health department and call twice a day to get the, save the health department's signatures on the plat?
Yeah, so that's your answer in there.
But, but I'm sorry, just when you receive health department approval on a map, and then you want to go back with the final map, it's a matter of if you get it in by Tuesday, the person who signs the map signs them on Friday. So it should be about a week, maybe if, if the guy who signs the maps is off on Friday or at the health department. So, you know, you may be talking about a couple of weeks at health department at most. But to have one map that has all the information on it, I'm just concerned, you know, you, you give the building department a planning board map that doesn't have health department showing on it. And then you give them a map with the health department. If it gets lost in filing, somebody might not know. If there's ever an issue with the health department, because sometimes, you know, it may be, and someone goes to build on one of those lots, the health department, you know, it may be helpful to have a map that's signed by the chairman that could go to the health department with. With a, an application for residence on one of the lots that was modified.
That is a requirement for subdivisions.
Right.
Current, which does not our current requirement for lot line adjustments.
But we could put it in.
Put it in. Do we have to codify it or do we do it by policy?
If we do it by policy until the code changes.
I jumped.
Love to have your input.
I'm going through this right now, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
And I'm having a war with my office because, you know, my, my office tells me that when you go to file a miscellaneous map, they are absolutely obsessed at the county with having as simple a map as possible, has to be absolutely totally legible. And they, they freak out when you have extraneous information on there, such as you would have in the health department, who will map, the health department has hypothetical semantics on it, for example, and hypothetical structures on it. And this has raised questions in the past, but we show that to the map filing people. They say, what is that? Is that, is that real? What is, is that hypothetical? Why is that on a miscellaneous map? So it can create confusion and, and cause problems getting filed as a miscellaneous map. Because they, they clearly, they don't consider these miscellaneous maps to be subdivision maps at all. In fact, they put a stamp right on the face of it when they file it, that this is not a subdivision, capital N O T, not a subdivision. And health department is typically required when you're filing a subdivision map. It's one of the flat filing requirements that you have to file a map as a subdivision county. So it's, it's kind of a, these miscellaneous maps are kind of a, I, I don't know, they were left over from another, another era, but they, they are not held to the same standards. And the people there are looking for absolute simplicity, they don't want to see any extravagance. Based upon the advice of my, our legal files these things all the time, for the, the three and, and, sorry, Sixth Daniel Road and the Three Borough Hall one, we ended up taking off a lot of the detail because we knew we were going to get rejected, you know, because they're showing wetland lines and, and flood zones and everything. They, they don't want to see that kind of detail on these miscellaneous maps that just freak out.
It was like latitude, longitude, and that's where the lines are, that's it.
Yeah, just meet the bounds. Oh, I'm filed with a miscellaneous map.
It's a miscellaneous.
But they, but, but when you, if you get your approval from the health department that, and on a map that shows conceptual structures on lots and things like that, and topo and whatever else the health department requires, you strip all that stuff off on a regular final plat that gets filed with the county clerk's office. So it's just.
It's just having health department's signature.
But you have a health department's signature on that. You also have the signature from the surveyor, and they have, you have your, the chairman's signature. I, I don't know what the difference is, but I understand it's not required in, in the code. But is getting health department approval required or is that a policy?
It's a policy. Because we ran into problems with.
With people, yeah.
Health department approval is required because, not because of the requirements, but because the health department considers a lot line adjustment to be a re-subdivision.
Absolutely, yeah.
They require you to follow their W W M form, but we apply for a subdivision.
Well, if we, if we approve something and then the property gets sold in its new format, and then someone goes back to the health department and tries to, and then they're stuck, the new owner's stuck.
I used to have this problem when I, when I was councilor at Spore, we approved them, and we did not require anything to be filed. And, and five months later, behold, they'd be back here yelling at us, you never told us that we needed to get a subdivision approval from the health department. We thought everything was going to be fine because the lot line was approved. But, you know, I, I never told anybody that we didn't have to satisfy the requirements of our agencies. The health department has always considered a lot line adjustment, anything that, that alters the existing tax lots. Now, they, they go back to nineteen seventy-seven, they look at the nineteen seventy-seven tax map. And they say anything that's changed from that, where it's changed from the last tax map that they, that they have seen and approved, they, they require you to come in for a subdivision. And that, that's a problem for people because they get the lot line adjustment, then they want to get their building permit. And you can't get a building permit without health department approval. And the health department is not going to approve it without a subdivision.
So that's the strength behind the policy. And, you know, I, I kind of think that Joe's suggestion is a good next step.
Yeah.
Not required by code, but it'd be prudent in the long run. And so is it really, if it's only adds, put that, clear it all out, just put that extra stamp on there, have the surveyors have us sign it, they're going to have the stamp and sign it anyway, so they can put the little box with their signature on it.
Well, if, if, if it like, we're going to be going and filing that now, we will, I, I, you ask the powers that be over there, you know, are you going to freak out the next time someone comes in with the health department stamp on there? Which, which is only there for informational purposes. Are you going to?
Please ask.
Yeah.
Because you're going to, you're going to have to come back anyway for another one, so.
Offering the, you know, sorts of information.
Matt, you had your hand up too.
Yeah, let me just, well, and I, I agree with John that the board is not necessarily better when it comes to these miscellaneous maps. What is, the board just has the wetlands, the health department approval as a prerequisite for signing the lot line change map as you currently do.
That's what we do now.
But having, not having, not requiring the health department's signature on the map. You've got it in your files, the building department has it in their files, the applicant has it in their files, the health department has it theirs. And your supplemental then to the, to the county clerk's office for the lot line change basically remains exactly as it is, which we know works.
I believe, you know, the, the problem in the old days was that, you know, we didn't tell people, we, we're not supposed to tell people what to do. That, that we didn't tell them that they need to go to the health department too, you know? So then they come back very irate that they couldn't get their building permit because they didn't go to the health department. Now you have to wait two months to get that. Well, I mean, I think you have solved that issue by requiring as a.
Tony Pasco would make us, ever since I joined in two thousand and eleven, would always insist that we notified and was even in the application, written into the application that the health department's a separate process and we recommend they go. Now, now we're actually requiring it.
It's actually a good idea, and I, I think that now only by giving the notice, but requiring, I mean, your, your conditions and your approvals require proof of, you know, of health department approval. So you're, you're, you're solving the problem because the people will then, in order to get the map signed by you and recorded as a miscellaneous map, they, they will obtain the health department approval and present it to you. So it, the problem goes away. They're not going to be in a situation where they go for their building and they have no help. The health department's never seen this. The health department only will have seen it, but would have approved it. And the approval will sit here filed.
I'm happy to keep it status quo, I just thought it's worth having a conversation.
Well, let's see what you find out.
We can revisit it again next month.
We can revisit it. We're going to make it more efficient. If we can. We don't want to over-engineer.
We want to make it more efficient correction than less efficient on the up stuff like that.
We don't want to over-engineer it, but let's see what he comes up with. I think it'll be interesting.
Okay, so we closed the, gone to wetlands applications, we closed the One Seagull Road to Soro wetlands application. My, my only two thoughts is one, I'm struggling with that balcony. Not having a history of the use of the hundred square foot exemption. I would think that possibly it not be included, and if they hadn't used their, haven't used their and can prove that they haven't used their hundred square foot exemption with the prior applications, then they can use it at, at the building department when they do this work. It just takes us, takes the responsibility off of us.
We're already doing that, you know?
We're allowing them to put in the sanitary system, which is an extreme measure. And we haven't allowed other people to even put on little decks, you know?
You have the one Silver Beach.
And then the other thing is the, the property does, after you get past the sanitary system, slope down. We are putting in stormwater collection, which reduces the over lawn flow water. But I do think some buffers there.
It's going to heal up and that off.
Yeah, offered ten feet, would, does that seem enough for the pitch, the grade, or?
There's not that much room there, too.
There's not that much room either. So the question is, do we need to wait for an updated map? Because we don't have a definition of what those, that material is. Now theoretically, you can't submit anything more. So.
We just closed it.
We closed it. So when we recommend a ten or fifteen foot buffer, do we now define the planting tier? It's a good question. We could say it's local fescues and not to be mowed, not to be maintained. And that way it's.
Isn't there a better kind of grass though? It's like a, a better kind of grass than just regular. So where's all the plugs?
So I'm sure it's more of a ground spur, it's more like Bermuda, it doesn't grow tall, or something a little, something a little more sturdy. I could pick something off, or we could, one of you guys could pick something off the CAC's list and just to say that we, we just want these, this type of grass. So let me go through the, the list as we always do. Number one, the proposed action and location will not create a risk of impairing the function and value of the wetlands buffer. I think they're putting in a high sanitary system, they're putting in drainage. And now we talked about this buffer, I think that will be an improvement to, to the wetlands. Are you guys in agreement on that?
Yeah, I mean, even the. Yeah, I mean, the, e- even the balcony, if it turns out that they can use the hundred foot exemptions, can't believe it's not like a building. And all this other stuff.
And it's got the local door underneath, so it's taking a.
What was the date again of that code change?
Two thousand and. Two thousand and one, seven, two thousand and one.
Yeah, I'm looking at aerial map.
Actually, there was a two thousand and there was a two thousand and one, but we've been generally saying two thousand and one.
I'm looking at aerial maps to see if I could tell.
I think this way we leave it to their review. And if the Building Department wants to punt it back to the wetland reviewer as they had to us on a few applications. We can certainly take it up as a separate task.
Sounds good.
The proposed project will not diminish any wetlands in size unless the approving authority finds that the proposed activity is water dependent. Or requires access to the wetlands as a central element of its base function. And will result in the minimum possible alteration or impairment of the wetlands. I, it's not reducing the wetlands inside. It's protecting it. The proposed project will not have a negative impact on the quality and quantity of groundwater. We've, that's an improvement with the I A sanitary system and the drywells. The proposed project will not create a net increase in the risk of runoff. That's for the drywells and I agree. And the buffer. The applicant has demonstrated there are no practical alternatives which allow the project to be constructed outside the regulated area. And, uh, I think they've shown that we, they, not much they can do with the sanitary system. And the, and the, or the pool. It's all pinned in that corner. The applicant has submitted information to describe alternative site locations and configurations. Uh, sufficient for a determination that the proposed work or location would have a less adverse environmental impact. Than any other practical alternative in order for it to be approved. I think we just answered that. Um, so the next, the next point is, um. Do they have water issues over that? They want to know of water issues, as in salinity. It's a very shallow property. I mean, is this something that we ask for a five gallon per minute? Well, I think that might be appropriate.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. And, uh, I don't remember if there's mention of, are they gonna do pool cover? It's been too long. It's just been too long since I looked at it. It's been.
Okay. You have all that, Beth, or?
I do.
Awesome. Thank you. So the next wetland permit is Chequid Avenue LLC. Do you have anything on that?
Yes, we do.
So, uh, I'm the architect on the application and must recuse myself.
Did you guys see your emails today?
Yeah.
So we got a memorandum from our SECR consultant, P W Grosser. And, uh, we've been, um, you can see the, the email Christina sent us. And we've been advised, uh, to authorize our consultants, P W Grosser. To expedite the coordinated, uh, review process. And to do that, we'd have to, uh, vote on that.
I think we should definitely do the process.
Should.
Yeah, it seems, and I think you mentioned that in the email. It seemed perfectly reasonable.
Okay, so what that means is they're gonna let, um, five bodies know. Five bodies are the Shelter Island Building Department, the Suffolk County Department of Health. Yep, the town of Shelter Island, uh, the CAC, uh, the Shelter Island Heights Property Association, Suffolk County Planning Board. And have, uh, thirty days to get comments back.
Marcus, just, I don't know if you want to have Kim is on, on Zoom. I don't know if you want to have, she prepared the memo for the board. If you want to have her make any comments or explain any, if the board has any questions about the procedure.
Uh, I don't. It just seems like the right, you know.
I, I would.
The process.
The only thing I would ask is, is, is our summary correct? Would be the only question I would have, just to make sure that it didn't state anything.
Like, you mean, is she satisfied with the EAF submissions and everything? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yes. Satisfied also with our, our summary of our. Yeah, that's what I'm most worried about. It's like, are we taking the steps that we would think appropriate?
And Beth, you agree with this?
Yeah, I, I think the board is at the position now where they can authorize the coordinated review. Um, which is what you're doing at this point, which then. Um, you, you said something about it being expedited. It's not expedited. It's just the natural progression of now you're coordinating review. It gets sent out to, um, the various agencies. They have thirty days to respond. If they don't respond, that's considered a, um, an okay from them, basically. And then the board can then at that point declare itself as lead agency. Um, which they would do at the, um, if we don't hear from anybody else, we would do at the next board meeting by resolution.
It probably will note that the next one, that there will be thirty days, so probably in December.
Yeah, so do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion for, uh, to have P W Grosser to do our coordinated review for Seven Chequid Avenue.
Second that.
Long clear.
Marcus, Stella, Stella.
Oh, Stella, you got a question?
Yeah, thank you so much. When will the documentation be received or posted? Because there's nothing on the website.
Uh, soon. Christina?
Yeah, so this recorded review, so this is something that is sent directly to the agencies. The Heights is one of the interested agencies, so it will be sent by Kim's office. And Kim can tell you exactly when you're gonna put it in there.
So what you're voting on now, is it thirty days from tonight? Or thirty days from receipt of that information by the agencies?
Kim, you want to turn it up?
Sure. So they're authorizing coordinated review, which will be a thirty day process. Our office will. Circulate the documents tomorrow for overnight carrier. And there'll be a thirty day review period where you can provide comments. Or there can be an objection to the planning board serving as lead agency. So the only thing happening now is authorizing the first step of coordinated review.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah, let's, let's.
Bring him back with him. Bring an ice cream.
No ice cream?
He can come back. He's donuts. Marcus, do you want to do the, the, the one sixty nine Ram with me again?
Sure. Yeah.
I was thinking that. I'm interested to see what's going on. Yeah, it's major, yeah.
All right, so. We're back to our RALAs Advisory Board to the Town Board for Wetlands Reviews. Marcus and I have signed up a long time ago for Lopez at sixty four Garner's Bay Drive.
Ready to go to now?
These are all ready to go to, right? They've all been reviewed for completeness by the town engineer.
No, just by the clerk.
By the town clerk. Okay. Will we be getting a engineering, engineer's note on these?
No, the environmental consultant will do P I Ds. Uh, we're hoping that the town board will appoint one on Monday. For outright side agreement, so hopefully we have somebody available by the end of next week.
So in theory, these are.
So if you wish to have that person in place first.
So we haven't got memos on. That used to be part of our procedure.
Yeah. So a part of our procedure was to get a memo from Joe. And then we move on it. Determine it was complete and issue to the.
It was better to have the memo first before.
But prior, prior to, back in the day. We just went and put our memo together and we were in essence the. Environmental review to the Town Board. So I don't know what. We might as well just jump on these. We have to write them anyway.
It's advice only, so it doesn't.
And I know there's, there's four here. I know there's two or three additional ones that are, that are sitting.
Now we should do it.
The cloud somewhere. You guys, who, you guys just signed up for? One sixty nine, so that's Marcus and Matt.
Yep, I'll happily do either of these or both. Happy to sit on.
Do you want to do, uh, Hawk?
Sure. Okay.
I'll do, I'll do Lumley with somebody.
David? I'll do it with you. Yeah, since I, uh, since I missed last month's meeting, I think I, I owe a little extra.
Bring ice cream. Who's doing home?
I'm, uh, David. And then now Lumley is what? David and Matt?
Yeah.
David and Matt, yeah.
Lumley's us and then left us. One sixty nine is Marcus and.
So the last thing on our list is a special permit application for the Perlman Music Program. There's two parts that we have to work on and, and that's, one is the. Parking and internal circulation. That's to be done in joint, uh. With the town engineer, Joe Benora. And, uh, I think the Building Department and, uh, Reed was on a vacation for the last nine days, ten days. So even though we've been trying to put a meeting together, we have not been able to. Um, we're supposed to go at some point later this week. Um, I would like to see Joe write a memo. You know, this is a residential cabin with four bedrooms and it requires X amount of parking. This is, um, a, a practice studio that has X amount of square feet. That needs X amount of parking. This is an outdoor performance center. It needs X amount of parking. And then when we have the total volume of cars, understand how the circulation is. And I think he is probably better suited to assembling that, doing that research for code and, uh, assembly.
I'm just an author that when I look at diagrams, I started counting up what, what was noted in this market. It looks to me like.
A little light.
It was, I was gonna say, a little light.
It's always light.
Yeah. And the other part of it, so, uh, unfortunately, we're not going to have a, that analysis for a while. The other part is, I tried, we got a landscape plan. And there's actually two sheets. That's, that's the main. I tried to print this out today. It was, it couldn't, my, I even tried to reduce it. My plotter couldn't handle it. My computer couldn't handle it. And my computer's pretty good. Because this is the kind of stuff I do. So it would be really awesome if we could get paper copies. I know it's a lot of real estate. But having looked at it. I think it's. It's a pretty plan. They're taking this building down. I don't know if you guys want to go through it this way. They're taking these three, so here's Shore Road. They seem to be taking these cabins down here. There's a building here, which I don't know what it is. And there's a building here they're taking out. And then they're adding cabins. And I'm struggling, right, with this plan to understand which cabins are existing and being renovated and what are proposed.
They, they, they're not doing the Matt Sherman, here's what it was, and here's where it's going. That would be nice.
Yeah.
But that is really useful when you have that. Because they're showing it with the building, but they're not trying to see which ones, they're not trying.
Here's the performance center. It looks like they're having a bathroom to service this performance center. They have some, looks like handicap paths or motoric paths. There's a parking on the other sheet right here.
I just remember I counted only twenty-two parking spaces, but. I'm not an architect, but I was.
No, it seems, it seems a little light. So I think they're planning to use Shore Road.
And across the street.
And Stern's.
And the challenge with that is if you're using parking there, then it's really hard for us to get. It's really hard for us to get a fire truck through here. Because we drive down this, whenever we. I've been to, I've been here a lot. Just put it that way. Here, and we go flying down this road. I go flying down this road. And it's very narrow.
When cars are all parked.
It's narrow when there's no cars. When there's no cars parked. So if they park there and, and you know, any festly type parking. They, people don't know that they park very well. So I would be concerned if that's what they consider their parking.
So I remember when the Pridwin was reviewed by the Town Board for Site Plan. They, oh, it's fine to park on the road. They can use Shore Road as part of their parking. I, I don't know if that's going to float in this round. But I.
Do you have parking in the lot across the street?
Yeah, so this is, I was, I started talking about that. Maybe that lot can be expanded. They're showing the, the border of, of what they're going to, um. Relanscape. The red trees are the ones they're taking out. And they're putting in a lot more.
I think a lot of trees.
No, I don't know that we have to be so concerned with the. There is no architectural review. I don't know who is going to be factoring in what this looked like from Shore Road. But instead of a series of little cabins and some old, older buildings. Now we got two very large buildings looming over the beach. I don't know whether this is existing or modified. So potentially three large. They're not even showing what this, oh. That's just, they're just putting a basement under this, I guess. And then that's new. This is all new. Let's see what the other sheet.
So you're concerned by how it looks from the shore, from the shoreline, looking up at the.
Yeah, that's from the road.
Ready for the water.
You see, this is why I'm thinking about having a category for the, for the sake of this, that's, you know, how are you supposed to get these guys in here?
This one has less activity going. Okay, so let's flip it around some. There's a chance, if you guys can see it's in the same way. This is at a different scale. So the parking lot is a lot smaller than this blow up. I take that back. They are the same scale.
It's just, it's just cuddle.
Yes, and then they're, they're gonna, you know, redo all this. I think there's only two new cabins, but I'm not quite sure which ones they are. They have some parking. They have some parking. But, you know, at least there's, there's four bedrooms in this one. There's two bedrooms in that one. Two bedrooms.
And then they pack them in.
Four bedrooms and they're two. And they have, so two, six, eight, ten. Fourteen, and they have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So. Two spots per bed, two bedrooms, one spot. So we need a memo from Joe on this.
Yeah, I think it's, it's what's code and what's normal. It's like, usually most of the time the people coming, this do not have.
I was just thinking, maybe they're assuming like this is.
Usability, they're probably okay, but I don't know about legally.
And then the question is, uh, can fire trucks get up this? Yeah. And can they turn around?
Oh, you can't turn around. It's like, where?
So then how would you get into the interior? You'd have to, I mean, you'd park out on the street only?
Yeah, well, we have to run hoes. So that's part of like, is understanding the distance, you know, get the scale.
So, um, that's, that's the Building Department issue, the fire, fire apparatus.
Yeah, we do that with the, with that. Yeah, and Reed knows that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess that's another reason for having Reed in on that meeting.
Yep, you should definitely.
So as far as the, you know, the actual landscaping, they seem to have put some thought into it. They're doing some minor new plantings. They're only taking out two trees here. Um, but maybe we should be asking for a bigger parking spot, which may affect it. But the real activity is on this one. So we're gonna have to put together a memo on this. Obviously, we're not ready for it. Now, when's the next public hearing on this? Obviously, we're not ready for it, now, when's the next public hearing on this?
It's Monday, Monday, and just in the.
So we're not, we're gonna be delayed till October 10th, so we discuss this again.
Hopefully, it's a meeting, hopefully, actually go understand it more.
Yeah.
Which would be huge.
Can we request these?
This size?
I, I don't even mind if they're a little smaller.
But you just can't see it on the computer.
It's, yeah, it's too hard to look at it on the computer.
It's frustrating.
Do all of you, would all of you like copies of this?
I don't need one.
Doesn't have to be this big.
Um, I, I don't think I need one of these.
So if we get two copies, it'd be nice.
Three, you have one.
I have one, so we have three.
Yeah.
And they don't have to be at the full scale either, they could be, uh, you guys both, I, I, I do better with the fulls because of my readers, but are you guys good at reading?
No, I'm, I'm good at reading, but just not on the, not for this kind of thing on the computer, it's just.
No, I mean, if they gave you a half scale.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be.
I mean, this is great to see.
This is beyond D size, I don't know what's bigger than D, but my machine goes to D, this is, I guarantee it.
It must be E, that's right, that's.
It's too bad.
Yeah, no, I'm fine on the computer, I'm, I'm sorry, I can do it on the computer, it's fine.
So we'll, we'll, um, you guys get a chance, want to go walk it, you can do it in twos, you can't do it all in groups. Um, I plan to go see it with, uh, with Reed and Joe.
If I can somehow get on that one, if the timing works, I'd love to go with Reed to.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you a heads up.
If possible.
Uh, I have a question, um, next planning board meeting is October 8th, do you need to meet for this manual? Do you need to discuss it on October 8th, or the manual will be prepared? Because the only reason why I have a, a meeting is on 7th, so whether we should adjourn to 7th or we should adjourn even later.
So, um, I have no problem discussing this by email amongst ourselves, if we're allowed to do that. Are we allowed to do that?
Put their memo, circling draft?
But then we can't, well.
No, if you want to be discussing this at the public meeting.
Yeah, so we're gonna discuss it on the 8th, so then there, you'll have to push it off.
Yeah.
Thanks, Matt.
That's very soon. If we're worried about, you know, not having too many people together going.
Yeah.
Things we can't do.
Properly, yeah. So, anyone in the audience have anything for us tonight? Anyone on the board have anything for us tonight? Anyone on Zoom have anything for us tonight? I make a motion to close the September 10th, 2024 planning board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.